Around here and Harry's got kids and he's got a project he's working on, so it's all good. He's got kids, he's got an upper bound program and he's working through a playlist with them and he wants to just go do that, right? But we're, we're here to help if you need.
Yeah, I reached out to Karen because like today, we met in person for the first time over the summer. We only meet on Wednesdays with those kids. And there's that one girl named Jenny and she is just like today in class, like she did not want to say anything. She's very awkward and self-conscious about like not being able to have enough words as she's acquiring English. So we did like a carousel today where we put a bunch of posters up on the wall. And she was cool with that, like where they had to come up with one word based on something we had. And she would, she was having fun, but when I asked her, we did a podcast today. And when I asked her, um, what she thought about like the theme today, she just, you could tell she was crazy nervous. She didn't want to speak because she didn't have the words. And I reached out to Karen, uh, I think it was at
Hi.
Orange Cove High School.
I, do you, do you mean Natalia? Harry, Harry. Let's chill for a second and just get going. I'll come back to you and just want to say hello to everyone. Marina is, uh, you've got projects to work on too. And Christina, um, so let me, let me just show you guys, let me make sure of one thing first. Marina and Harry, um, are co-hosts and Christina is not, I don't know why I promote the co-host. Can I? Yeah, you are now. Okay. You've got to start now. So one of the things you want to, I want, so I, I imagine that this would be work slash playtime. Right? And I would show you a couple of things and you can go work on, I mean Christina, if you want to work on that playlist that you started a while ago, that would be great to do. Um, but if you haven't built anything here in Kumho Space, that might be fun to do. I had an aha the other day and if you see the whiteboard over here, I just want to show you this one thing. Uh, you can click on the whiteboard, right? And now you like, the aha I had was, oh, we could put an image on top of the whiteboard. Which, and then we could have like different activities in different areas associated with the whiteboard, right? So if you click on the whiteboard, you can see it goes to a whiteboard. If it doesn't work for you, let me know. Sometimes it doesn't load properly, but I think it does. Then you go to note, you can kind of see what's up with that. So, so, so here's, here's the, here's what I've been wondering about. Could we imagine a playlist actually being in a room, right? Like this, so that you, instead of, so that you would go from different activity areas. Right? You would go from different activity areas and you'd click on the whiteboards and you would go, because on the whiteboards, you can find links and, and other things, right? So that's just sort of the edge of what I'm doing with Kumho Space here. Um, you, you can see, you can explore around, um, you could, so you could, what, here's, I, I jumped, I jumped over that very quickly. One other thing, there is a, so you want to go to the edit button in the bottom right? And, and build yourself a little study area. Um, and you can do that right here in this office. We can use this as, or right here in this space here for, for TTT. So that's one thing you could do. You could mess around with, with putting a rug up, making, and seeing how that works. Okay? And/or work on playlists. And there, in that whiteboard, you can see a link to that. Melissa, I was welcoming people and saying, go play. Okay.
I don't think I've met Melissa before.
Yeah, Melissa, say, say a couple of things you do.
Hi, Christina, I'm at Lehman, I'm at Lehman College in the Bronx. I, I supervise student teachers and teach in the early childhood and childhood department.
Great, cool.
And your claim, do your claim to fame, I love your claim to fame about the writing project.
Oh, and I worked at the writing project in Puerto Rico on the west coast. Yep.
Maya West.
Yep, Maya West. Oh, you know Maya West, that's exciting.
Well, I worked for the national office, so.
Okay.
I don't always remember the names, but I do remember.
Okay, so do you know Elise?
Yes, yes, I work for Elise.
Okay, so that's good to hear that she's still there. Like when she, when we first, when we, when we first started the Maya West, uh, project, she came down.
Oh, she visited?
Yes. And so that's good. Please say hello.
Oh, I will, yeah.
I'm still trying to get to San Francisco to get to, uh, the restaurant, what, uh, Che Panis.
Che Panis.
We had a great conversation about that.
All right, yeah, I'll totally tell her.
Yeah.
So Christina, you, you, is that okay just to go play? And then Marina, do you know what you're working on? So Marina, why don't you describe, describe your, um, escape room activity that you're doing? Briefly.
Oh, okay, so.
And Melissa, I wanted you to hear this too, but go ahead, yeah.
Over the course of the, I had a, I had a student who was remote for the entire year. And then I also had, um, a full class in front of me and then kids going back and forth depending on if they needed to quarantine or, or, uh, something like that. Um, so I wanted to create, uh, as many experiences that I could that were accessible for both somebody who was outside of the, outside of the physical location and in the physical location of the classroom. So, um, we're a Microsoft district and I had never really tinkered around with escape rooms to begin with. But I also learned that a lot of teachers were making digital escape rooms using, um, Google Slides or, uh, Microsoft OneNote. And, um, I started playing around with that in the, uh, that idea in the fall. And I created like a bunch of these different dilemmas for the students that were surrounded, uh, in the, their current like math skills. And then kept embedding like more math skills as the year went on. Um, so what, um, Paul and I, you know, we were talking about, developing, taking the escape room and then implementing it or integrating it into, uh, youth voices. Because there's also the option to have locked pages in it, because that's, that's the main thing. Um, students solve math problems and then they use the answers to unlock the next challenge.
You can do that with Google Slides?
You, you can. A lot of teachers have done that with Google Slides. I, like I said, I'm in a Microsoft district, so they, no playing with Google. Um, but you know, I kind of wanted to just try to do it in slides. But, um, for now, what I'm doing is I'm transferring one of the escape rooms that I created for my third graders into, um, youth voices and locking each of the pages. So they need to be unlocked with the correct answer to the mathematical challenge.
Cool. Very cool.
As I'm talking, I, I'm realizing, can I, and, and is Harry still here? Harry, can I show you one more thing? We'll see how long I keep saying, can I show you one more thing? But, um, Natalia's kids started just two days ago. She has like a ninth grade English class. Um, and I'm going to show you just a, something they started doing today that's worth thinking about. Can you see what I'm sharing? Am I sharing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I think if I just go to Diana's here, so first of all, her, they're, they're working through this, you know, finding an icon and a back image and then, but then, um, she had them, let me just go to Diana's and hope that she did, yeah. So she's having them write kind, so she has them for five hours a day for 11 days. So like it's a summer school course, right? But, um, interestingly, she's having them write about the habits of mind that they did recently and then you, they eventually say a few hours later. If you want to look at those, I think those are really kind of interesting what they're doing. Um, Diana, let's just see. They're also, so our experiment with Natalia and with, um, Harry is, um, is, is to kind of like not use Google and everything else to try to do everything here on Youth Voices for this. So she's actually keeping a journal already of her work here. She's written once, twice, she's written four times already in the last two days. So that's kind of nice that that's here. And then Natalia's hoping, who knows if you can do it in 11 days. She's hoping to pull together a portfolio for these kids. But, um, so you might, so the way to check some of that out is to go to members on Youth Voices and, um, you know, just click on a kid and see what they're doing. Right? So there's that, um, I don't know how to organize this any other way, except I'm going to shut up and let, let you guys work and play and figure some things out. Melissa, do you have something to work on or mess with?
I, I wanted to
What do you want to do?
If I could Marina on you in terms of what you did with your third graders and just the idea of an escape room and, because I don't know anything about any of that, so.
So Marina, why don't you and Melissa go off in a corner somewhere and work together? And just work on, just show her what you're doing. You, you can, you can share your screen and
Oh, is that, does that work only for like the circle you're in too?
It does not work that way. But, but it's okay. We, those of us who don't want to see it can just make it small and make it go away. And then if you want to make it big, you can make it big, right? So feel free to share a screen. I'll, I'll stop sharing. But you should go off, find a, yeah, find a desk to sit at, the two of you. So, so you're not bothered us and we're not bothering you. Okay.
And I'm just going to work on my stuff for, uh, Youth Voices if that's okay. Now, I'll leave this on in case somebody says something, but I mean, I'm just gonna, I'm going to post like a couple of things that I can use for tomorrow when I see the kids.
Go for it. Okay. Christina, um, if you need anything, let me know.
Okay, yeah, I just need to finish one thing.
Okay.
Uh, in my other space and then I'm going to come back here and play.
Okay, good.
I'm just not opening it.
I'm sorry.
All right, so I'm just, um, wanting to make sure that you're able to share with each other.
Around with this for a while. Okay, I'm sharing now, right?
Yes.
You are.
Okay.
Perfect, go for it.
And they, they really are very, you know, they're very, very strict. They, they don't want us playing around with, um, Google. Um, and it can lock pages, so, um, this is what it looks like. I don't know if you're familiar, Melissa, with OneNote.
I, you know.
Wait, I, I was doing something else I wasn't listening to. I'm going to listen this time. Say it again?
I see the chat window up on the head chat. Um, is it, is there a way that you can see the ongoing comments that were made or no?
Where?
In the chat window in Kumho Space? Like always, yeah, I see his current room and enter message.
I just scroll, just scroll down.
Scroll down. I don't see us. You mean scroll down on the chat window?
Yes.
Let's see. Okay, thanks.
It's okay.
All right, I got you. I think somebody, Marina was asking if you were available.
Yeah, I'm going to go over to her.
Paul?
Yes.
How do I edit the, the playlist you started in Youth Voices? I logged in, I still don't see an edit.
Um, but you're on your playlist.
Yeah.
Oh, there's the edit page way at the top? In the toolbar?
Oh, it's WordPress, right? How come the font is so small?
Um, you can change it.
Oh, okay. Do you make it small for?
No, it's the sort of standard.
Really? Because it's not. On our websites, on our WordPress, it isn't that small.
Uh, I don't know, it's.
Unless we customize them, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean,
No, but for each, each thing you can, you can sort of make it, you could, you can make it larger.
Okay.
I don't know what, I don't know why the standard is this small.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay.
You know, depending on, you know, what they know and what they, but, um, but that was my, that was my first experience. Paul?
Sorry.
Do you remember we were having all those issues the other day with saving and stuff?
No.
We did.
Okay.
So.
What issues are you having?
Well, I could, I can't remember how to, so basically only one of the pages saved in the playlist. Um, I'll show you. Sorry. Where is the? The independent pages I made, so only the first locked page saved.
Okay.
It's open now, obviously, because I opened it. Um, but I do have, um, so this is that, the dilemma page, right? And this is an unlocked page. It's supposed to be public. How, how do I move this from just being a page and, and embed it into the playlist? I, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
No, no, no. We only did it one time. So, um, what is, is this, is this one of the locked pages?
This page is not locked. This is the one that's, that's open and available to get, to get everything going.
But you, you put that in already.
It's not there though. It's not on the, um,
Go back to, should be.
Actually, I had deleted all the stuff that, remember I misunderstood like the task and I had deleted it.
No, but then we, then we, then we put it all in. Go, go back to the playlist for a second. Let's see if we can.
This one?
Uh, my, the screen didn't change yet, if you're.
Oh, this one?
It still didn't change.
Uh, oh, because I'm only sharing the tab?
Maybe.
Okay. Okay. This one?
Yes, now go, go to edit this page. And I hope it's in the first activity box. What we decided was to not make it a page, to just do it here. But why isn't it there?
Yeah, the first, the locked page is there.
No, I know, but above it, we put all the other stuff.
We, we did and there was, um, when we were hitting update, I don't know if you remember it, like, it kind of had grayed out a little bit and it had like a circular thing and you, you said like, don't worry, there's an auto save. Oh, look, it's here right now. Or is that just for those like moment?
No, it, it saves the whole history, so you could go back and find it maybe. This is worth, this is worth learning, yeah.
Yes, leave?
Yes.
So I'm in Youth Voices trying to follow Marina and what I see first is unlocking math skills and concepts for the escape rooms. And then in brackets, remember to add a featured image.
Right.
Right, okay.
Marina, you need to go, do you see at the top, there are versions? You need to go back. Couple of versions, yeah. And it's hard to read, but you, you will be able to.
Where would I find that? What am I looking for? I know you said, oh, compare versions.
No, see previous, hit the previous button. It's right, right above your face.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good visual, so.
All right, now you have to read code unfortunately, but can you see if that, if, I can look. You go, when, when was that? Five days ago? Yes.
Yeah.
So that, scroll down and see if that looks right. Can you see?
I don't really know.
You have to be able to recognize. I can try, I can try to do this. I'm going to try to do it myself, so I'm going to take over editing of, of that.
Okay.
Okay. Where is it? Edit page. Okay. Um, and then now, yeah, it's funny, all that got replaced. It didn't get replaced, um. There's another, I don't care about that. Okay, I'm looking at the five revisions. I'm taking a chance here, but it can't get worse.
Okay. Well, if anything, then I would just, I could just reset it, right? If I just start over?
Yeah.
With, with embedding the pages.
So, but remember your first one, you don't want to embed, the first one, you're going to actually do it here.
We just, you're right, we did just copy it and paste it, yeah. But still, it's not there, so.
Okay. So we could do it right now. Um, I'm gonna watch you do it. You want to do that?
Sure.
Do we have time?
Yeah.
Okay, um, let me get out of here.
Am I still sharing?
Uh, yeah, you are.
Okay.
Okay. Um, but I don't see it yet, okay. So, what you want to do is go to the playlist.
Yep, okay.
Where is it?
Where did it go?
Oh, I made it a draft. Okay.
Is it somewhere else?
Yeah, but, um,
That's where I found it under draft.
I know, I, I know, I know, but I made it a draft, draft. That, it's not, so you can find it, um, if you go, this isn't worth doing right now though. Um, I'm going to publish it again, so it shows up on this page. Marina?
Want to crash?
Yeah, let me, no, here's what you need to do. Go to, um, go to the backend, go to, yeah, go to the dashboard. I always forget that word. And then go to pages and then go to my pages. There you go. And is it there?
Yeah.
Okay, click on that. Let's see how fast we can do this. I bet we can do it fast. So take over.
Take over?
Yep.
Leave or, yeah?
Yep. Okay, now let's scroll to, um, activities and erase, erase.
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah, so what do you want to call this header? This is a get started here or something. What did?
Uh.
Or what did you call that first page?
Oh, we would like dive into the dilemma or something, there's.
Go for it.
I'll just put that right now.
All right, now just delete everything inside that, yeah, all of that.
Totally did that.
I know, except the, um, except the habits, right?
Yeah, okay.
And I think you can, I think you found, you, you could highlight it and hit delete, right? Okay. Yeah, I know, I don't know why it didn't save. But let's try to make it save this time. You're almost there. It's the problem with templates. They're like helpful, but then they get, they become a pain at some point.
All right.
Get rid of that image too, you don't need that.
Which image?
That's a,
Oh, this?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't even really go with that. Okay. And then I'm, now I'm pasting.
Uh, yeah, get rid of that too. That's a spacer, yeah. Okay. Click there, oh wait, you know, chain, you want to have a, a paragraph icon there.
That one?
Uh, no, that's the whole big one. Click in the blue again and press enter. And I click where it says habits of mind. And then, um, the three dots. And, uh, what's it called? Uh, insert before. There we go. No. Uh, well, you have to get your, um, did you copy? Okay, good. Go for it. Go, go in.
Yeah.
Okay, um, before, before you make all the changes and stuff, let's, let's, let's hit, yeah. Let's hit, let's hit save draft. Top left, top right, yeah. Good, and then let's hit publish while we're at it too. Good. And then let's hit publish while we're at it too. Um, it'll take a second, yeah, there you go. It's not going anywhere except that page, so you're okay. Yeah, so now you want to make the pictures bigger?
Yeah, I think I remember how to do that.
Okay.
Or say.
So this was good learning again.
Well, I've been on a roll with working on Now Comment.
I know, I saw you put.
I added a lot of stuff. I mean, I have more questions for you, but.
Okay. So Melissa, what, what you could help us with at some point is we, we're collecting good examples of multimodal learning experiences for youth. And for children and for younger kids too. So Marina's, Marina caught, what, put a couple of videos up in Now Comment. And so we're, we're, we're doing more of those. I was gonna come over and say, you know, you should show Melissa that too, but there's only so much we can get done. It's fine.
Yeah, I've been having fun with that. I've been having fun with all of it.
Okay, good.
But I think cause I'm spending time like following the, what I've learned in Now Comment, I probably.
Please be sure to hit update. Whenever you make a change.
I can see it. I refreshed and I can see what you just added. Dive into the dilemma.
So this is all just sort of technical learning and it's, it is interesting to remember that if we want the residents to do this too, there, there's a, there's a learning curve for this too.
Yeah.
But they are actually making a game in their, in their Scratch project, right? So one of the things that Tom and I have talked about is could they build a playlist around the game they make in the Scratch project so that all this sort of comes together for them? So we're, I'm hoping that that happens. But anyway, just, I don't know if you understood all those pieces, Melissa.
I'm not familiar with Scratch.
Okay, okay.
That's probably part of the micro credential.
Yeah, that's the other, that's the other thing they're doing this summer, yeah.
And, and, and I, I definitely want to explore Now Comment, so are we due to meet again next Wednesday that I can maybe set that as my, my focus?
I'm not, if not next Wednesday, the Wednesday after that. But yes, um, yeah, we can do that. We can do that soon. And if you want to do it sooner, we can do that too. Hey, Harry. I'm gonna jump out. See you later.